Welcome everyone to the Board of Commissioners' Work Session, December 16, 2021. First order of business is approval of the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
My second. All the favor?
Sorry, who's second did I couldn't hear?
Right. Next order is bond referendum.
Thank you, Mayor. We have four topics before the board tonight. The first is-
I'm sorry, did we start early? Six o'clock, right?
Yeah, we had a motion and a second. I don't think we voted.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
All the favor?
We voted.
Next on the agenda is the bond referendum.
Thank you, Mayor. We have four topics before the board tonight. One is on the bond referendum. One is on programming for Parks and Recreation. Another is to start a discussion on how the board wants to fill the board vacancy, and we need to revisit the 2022 meeting schedule. As far as the first topic, bond referendum is one way that a community can raise revenue to finance and fund infrastructure projects. You can also do what's called COPs, or you can also raise taxes directly. Bond referendum, however, is probably the most complex process for a community to engage in, and so we wanted to get some information in front of the board to explain the process, most specifically the steps and the schedule and the costs associated with that. And so with that, I'll recognize Finance Director Bobby Fitz.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Just going to go through what we're going to discuss tonight just briefly. First, I'm going to talk about the process, what all we have to do to satisfy requirements for the LGC and other groups. I'll talk about the timeline, what we have to do to get on the November 2022 ballot, and then I'll kind of go over a handful of costs that are associated with the bond referendum, discuss some of the projects on board, you know, public safety, facilities, roadways, parks, something like that. We'll give you a quick look at some of the probable uses of bond issuance. And then you'll see a sample ballot that's just sitting in front of you now, and then we'll talk about what this would mean as far as property tax implications going forward. First of all, this is about a six-month process at least, from start to finish, to get all the necessary stuff completed to get on the November ballot. One key thing to remember is there, you have seven years. Once the bond referendum passes, you have seven years to issue today. You don't have to necessarily issue it all at the beginning. You can issue some now, two years, three years, four years, five years down the road, however we want to do it. One key thing, the town cannot advocate for the referendum, per se, but they can educate the public on, okay, here's how we want to use it, here's how it's going to have to be paid for, things like that. Just education-wise, not, we can't necessarily campaign for it. Anybody has any questions as I go through? Just stop me. This is an early look at a possible schedule for November 2022 ballot. Starting in March, we need to kind of nail down, okay, what do we want to, do we want to do these purposes? Do we want to put this on the ballot? And what kind of amounts are we going to, are we talking about? We can nail those down as we get closer. We got some ballpark figures we'll see in a minute. Then in April and May, the Board of Commissioners will have to adopt a resolution authorizing the bonds. Then in May, that's when we start. We file a notice of intent with the LGC and a notice to the Joint Legislative Oversight Committee on Local Government. These are all steps that have to be followed. Then probably in May, we would file the application with the LGC. There's, they meet once, once a month to discuss things like this. They do installment finances, not necessarily all bonds. We did the 10-year project on some building facility maintenance back in 2014, not a bond issuance, but we had to go through the LGC application process for that, too. Then in June of 2022, we would introduce the bond order to the Board of Commissioners, and a publication of bond order and notice of public hearing would then be published at that time. Then in August, we would conduct the first public hearing, and then it would, the board would need to adopt a second reading of the resolution calling for bond referendum, and then the certified copy would then have to be delivered to the Board of Elections. Also in August, we would publish the first and second notice of bond referendum. These are all things will be published in the paper. Then in September, that's when we would seek and hope to get LGC approval on our application that we filed earlier, and then at that time, absentee ballots will be made available also during that month. And then in September, I mean, November 8th would be the election date, and then a week later, that would be the canvassing of the ballots and returns, and then December 5th, we would publish Declaration of Results. I mean, the 9th, excuse me. That's really it for schedule. Anybody have any questions on that? As far as the costs go, we would need to hire a bond counsel. That would be anywhere from $35,000 to $50,000, most likely. These fees can be, also be rolled into the bond issuance, too. Let's say we were issuing $10 million in actual projects, and we could, we could add in these fees here to basically reimburse ourselves. And then a financial advisor, we've talked to bond counsel, and they've, most of them, all have recommended a financial advisor to help us along the way, do some legwork in the beginning, things like that. That would also be about $30,000 to $50,000. And then the actual election itself, that we would pay Wake County to get on the ballot, to staff the polls and everything like that, is about $2,500. All right, now to talk about some of the projects that are, that are on the table. First, we got the fire EMS building, roughly about $5 million, which is of our share of it. North Arrendal Improvements, roughly about $4 million. And then, subject to change, but a parks project of some sort, not sure yet what that'll be. Right now, we got a $2 million figure in there for that.
Bobby, to my knowledge, we did not, as a board, vote on a specific location for the fire in EMS building. So are we putting the cart before the horse by entering into this refer, this bond referendum discussion prior to actually having a location nailed down?
No, I wouldn't say so, because I think no matter where, well, if we were to buy some additional land on another location, it would probably need to add some more, if it's another location. If it's a million-dollar piece of land we have to buy, we, that would probably become six or more for that building.
And does the, do the North Arrendal Avenue improvements take into consideration the, our funds that we potentially use to pay for a portion of that?
They don't. What we're trying to do is we're just trying to educate the board on if you, if you had a bond referendum, this is the process you would go through, and this is what it would cost. If you, if you did not use the funds, even though you're authorized to use $4 million, let's say that you were able to utilize a different pot of money, like ARP, then you wouldn't, you wouldn't take out the $4 million. All this process does is authorize you to take out $4 million. So if you can offset that by other sources, then that's, that's a possibility.
And what exactly would the financial advisor do that we couldn't do ourselves?
They, on the front end, they do a lot of legwork as far as affordability, debt affordability issues, things like that. They, they would help on the back end with the selling of the bonds. Well, LGC kind of does some of that, too. And just, it's been recommended by everybody, saying there's a lot of work to do that we don't have the time to do essentially.
We can come back with more specifics.
All right. You'll see, I gave you a little while ago, there's four sample ballots. These are some Wake County municipalities that are on the last month's ballot. You'll see Apex, Fuquay-Green, Garner, and Marshville. They all had a bond referendum on their ballot. And you'll see Apex had street and sidewalks, Fuquay had parks and rec and transportation improvement. Garner had a lot. They did parks and rec, streets, public safety facilities, and stormwater aid, which all approved. They're going to issue about $69 million in bonds. And then Marshall had public improvement, public safety improvement, parks and rec, and streets and sidewalk bonds. This is what, what our, what this, or our ballot would look like. And similar question, you know, like, you'll see, I won't read the whole thing, but this is what it would look like, just so you would know. And then the voters would either check yes or no. As far as what the property tax implication would be, currently, about a penny on the tax rate will generate about $150,000. That's slowly growing as we grow, assuming there's no depreciate, assuming depreciation, depreciation of business personnel probably doesn't outpace the growth, which is possible. But right now, it's about $150,000 on the, for a penny. And then using those figures that we discussed a second ago, about $11 million issuance, that would basically come out to a 20-year bond on annual debt service, about $725,000 to $750,000, which would equate to about 4.5 to 5 cents on the tax rate annually. That's all I had. We're open for questions. If anybody has any additional.
So we heard specifics on what a financial advisor would do. If there's any other things that we can look up and provide you information. We're not looking for direction. This is just a lengthy, complex process, and we're trying to get you information.
Our kind of drop-dead date to have this in motions, probably, what, February? Early March at the latest?
Probably, yeah. That's when you kind of start needing to get the ball rolling on, on all the authorizations and things like that.
That's for a November ballot?
Yeah, that's to get on the November ballot.
Correct.
My question would be, how do we inform the citizens? How do we let them know what they're doing, election date, things of that nature? What is that process?
I'm sorry, I can't understand you. Can you take your mask off?
The process is this, I prefer keeping it on. The process is, I'm asking, how do we inform the citizens what we're doing and keep them informed in the loop as we go along with the process, make sure they're informed?
Yeah. Well, as far as during the process, as far as education-wise, I was talking with the counterpart in Garner. What they did throughout the year, or leading up to the process, they had like, the board had like Q and A sessions with citizens, like, let's say maybe at the community center, for example. And like I said before, we can't advocate for it, but we can just educate, say, okay, here's what we want to do, and then just kind of open up for questions and input. That's, they also had a, created their own website, a new website, like garnerbonds.com, I think is what he said to call it, where you could post information on there, pictures, videos, things like that you can share to, to educate the citizens, like leading up to it. Maybe, you know, let's say maybe starting in summer, you know, you could start, or maybe before, it wouldn't hurt before. Just kind of let everybody know, okay, here's what we want to use it for, here's some drawings and stuff like that, maybe as far as like parks, or a fire EMS building, or drawings of North Arrendal, you know, things like that.
Okay.
You could post on the website, and, you know, we can share it out through all social media channels and, to try to get it, get the word out.
Any more questions on the bond referendum discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to Parks and Recreation program.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The board recently approved their Play Zebulon Parks and Recreation Master Plan. That master plan was developed after extensive feedback from the community on services, programs, projects, parks, that the community was interested in. Now, you'll start a discussion on how to implement that, and so Parks and Rec Director Sheila Long will go through three parts of how you can implement the programming aspect of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, as well as some potential projects that you can move forward on as well, with the $150,000 that you already have budgeted to implement the plan. So with that, I'll recognize Sheila Long.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the board. Thank you for having me this evening. There we go. So we- me this evening. There we go. So we, to get to this place of Play Zebulon, which is our comprehensive master plan, the, we started with our Zebulon 2030, so that's the town's strategic plan. And we want Zebulon to have that vibrant, growing community maintaining our small-town charm and heritage. And your strategic plan identified your three focus areas, and all three of those focus areas recognize opportunities from Parks and Recreation Department and how we can help implement the town's strategic plan. And that led us to the development of the town's strategic plan, and, I mean, to the town's Parks and Rec Master Plan, where the vision that was adopted in Play Zebulon, I'm just going to root to you really quick, was to create recreational and cultural opportunities that enhance quality of life and connect our residents through positive impacts on health and wellness, social interaction, economic growth, and environmental stewardship. The goals that were adopted specific to Play Zebulon also are associated with the focus areas of your strategic plan. I'm just going to pick a couple of them to talk to or to just reference. But one of the first goals we had was to offer comprehensive services. That will direct, it kind of hits on all of them, but mostly on small-town life and growing smart. We want to make sure that we are serving all of our citizens and that we are offering a variety. Another item which stands out to me is engaging our community. That is definitely going to hit on all three, and it's a variety of getting them to participate in our programs, but also collaborating with them on community projects and community services and resources. So there's just a lot of areas that these tie in together. So these goals led us to the adoption of the master plan. And where you adopted the, the different subsystems, and one of the subsystems was programs, community health, and special events. The vis- what came out of our visioning workshop, specific to programs, community health, and special events, was that we were seeking to provide a high quality of life. We want to expand access and variety. And town-wide special events, opportunities to bring people together, really stood out throughout the community input phase and again through the visioning phase. So the implementation section of our master plan gave us some recommendations specific to our programs. So the items in, in red on the left, we'll talk a little bit more about tonight. The items on the right are items that we're going to be continuously working on as we operate as a department, such as the development of a program plan that will, we are currently doing that and preparing for budget season, which is also why we wanted to talk with y'all tonight. So on the left-hand side, where we have these different sections, so we have continue to grow programs, and out of the master plan, there were four areas. So that's youth sports, special events, health and wellness, and teens. And then there were five categories that stood out through the public engagement portion, and that's new program priorities, being adults and seniors, aquatics, special needs, nature, and adventure programs. We have a sheet for you to take a look at. So we kind of brainstormed as a program in staff, and we looked at these categories, and then we wanted to provide some examples are, what are some programs you can do that won't require significant resources to implement? What are some if you provided additional resources? What types of programs those would look like? We can't necessarily do it all. This isn't comprehensive of every program that our department currently runs, because, one, we kept it just to these categories, but two, it's just, it's just an example. So what we wanted you guys to do is just take a few minutes to kind of look over these different categories, and thinking about like, what takes significant resources versus non-significant resources, and maybe look and help us, if you could categorize in the existing, your top two, and in new programs, what your top two will be. Because we'd very much like to use this information to spark conversation, but also as we're developing our program budget for, for the upcoming budget year, having this information from you will also be helpful. So I'm, I'm happy to answer questions, but if you're good, we'll just give you a few seconds to kind of, or a few minutes if you need it, to look over this. And just to clarify, if I need to, the categories are, the column on the left, the programs are examples in the other two columns.
So you want our top two categories?
Categories.
Can I ask a question? Why do you have rebuild summer softball under new programs? Since there's already a softball program in place, why doesn't that sit under the existing programs?
Our adult athletics, I, I would not consider that a strong existing program.
With that said, are these the only programs that you will focus on, or is there room for implementation of different programs? Like, say, I kickball or something like that, because I heard citizens say that as well, like a kickball league, or would they throw that in, or how would that work?
This is just suggestions?
Right, I understand. I completely agree with you. I'm just kind of curious what she's got to say.
Yeah, it's just a variety. Well, I, I just want to give an example of what would take a lot of resources versus what we're going to need, or wouldn't take a lot of new resources, and what will take more resources. But yeah, it's, we can offer a variety, and just getting this feedback tonight is helping us develop our, our program plan a little bit further in how to present a budget for y'all.
All right, thank you.
Should we just turn these back in, or do we discuss them?
Um, if you're, if you're okay with it, would you like to go around the room and we could hear from each commissioner kind of what their categories are, and maybe, maybe why?
We'll start with Commissioner Louts.
Okay. Under existing, the number one I have there is special events, primarily because that involves both the young and old. And I did add a little note under it that I think some neighborhood events or things by subdivisions would be nice to have a close community, much like we do with the night out function. And then my number two choice was the youth sports. You're doing a very good job there. I'd like to see us continue to build on that, especially with all the young youth coming to town. Under new program enhancements, adults and seniors, number one, because we, I am one for starters. And two, I think we're having a lot of older people move into town as well, not just young families, and we need to build that program up. And number two, I like nature as one to enhance.
Thank you. But the top two in existing was special events and health and wellness. I think we just need to stress health and wellness to everyone. And then in the new ones, adults and seniors, and then I put special needs, because I don't think we have enough for that existing. Thank you.
I think existing programs, more involvement with teens, and concert series downtown. And new enhancements, more, more cultural variety programming, and specialty programming.
As for me, the existing would be teens, and basically just to kind of get those guys more involved. I think we need to add some improvement in that. They're currently involved, but to kind of get them out a bit more in the community. And second would be special events, kind of to get more community involvement as more of the community grows, getting people to meet each other there again, doing special events. And then your new programs, I would do adult and seniors. We have a lot of young adults coming into town, moving in. And during my campaigning, they were talking a lot about different events and potential to grow my, I, like I talked about the kickball league, things of that nature. And then I'll piggyback off what Commissioner Clark said, the special needs. I think we don't have anything that, that target audience like that, to enhance on that.
Thank you.
Certainly, when you look at the programs that we currently have, there is not a whole lot that speaks to teens. And so I'd really like to see more programming there. I mean, this is the time in their lives where they can go in two directions. And we'd like to give them, I would like to give them wonderful opportunities to send them down the right path. Special events, absolutely, although I'm, I'm less of a fan of the thought of doing individual neighborhood events, because I think it's exclusionary to the town as a whole, and that's where the tax base is coming from, the community at large. But certainly, festivals, concert series, I think there's a lot that can, can be enhanced through special events. And as far as new programs, I, I do think that adult and senior programming would be an awesome area to focus. Keeping adults engaged in town, doing things that make them feel more connected to Zebulon as a whole, whether it's through a softball league, or a basketball league, or a soccer league. I think that that will help bring especially the newer subdivisions into what we consider our small town. And secondly, I think with the wonderful amount of parkland that we have, I would like to see further development of some nature programming.
Thank you. That's going to be very helpful for us. So we just talked about which programs stood out, or program categories stood out more. And I wanted to kind of hear from the board. So as we enhance these and try to expand our services, typically what comes with expanded services is going to be resources. So are we look, would we be interested in expanding resources to expand our services, or are we looking to shift existing resources? In Bobby's presentation over the bond, we heard that a one cent tax is equivalent to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in funds for the town. So with that said, I wanted to give an example for us to talk about on what would shifting existing resources or could it look like versus adding additional resources, and it could be a mixture of that. So that's where I wanted to talk about the farmer's market a little bit. The farmer's market, we wrote a grant, I believe I wrote that, and we were awarded that in 2014. And it was grant-funded wholly outside of full-time staff hours that were assisting with the operation of the program. And I wanted to show the expenses related to operating the farmer's market. Currently, we are operating it at about thirty-one thousand dollars in this current fiscal year. When I came here in 2018, or the end of 2018, it would have been fiscal year 2019 here. But in 2018, we had spent almost fifty thousand dollars on operation of the farm fresh market. In 2019, you see a peak. That peak is a little bit associated with, for the first part of that season, a lot more of my time from a full-time staff perspective was invested in the operation of that market than are typically spent. So with that understanding, I wanted to share what, when we wrote the grant in 2014 to the John Rex Endowment, our goal was to fight the recent label of a food desert by furthering efforts to create an environment and opportunities that promote healthy options in our underserved community and allow these options to be the easy choice. This is a very advantageous goal, and we entered this grant. We did not have a strategic plan like you have today. We did not have a Parks and Rec Master Plan like we have today. And so when we look at this, there are some options that we have. These aren't the only options, but are some options. In order to achieve a goal similar to this, is a farmer's market truly going to help us accomplish this? Or are there other areas where we could collaborate? So we've been talking with CAFN, so that's the Capital Area Food Network, about some of the challenges that we've had with our farmer's market, as well as some of the other challenges that our community has and our farmers have. And there is interest in their end and on our end to work, to truly move towards, I wrote down what the, the purpose of CAFN is. to work, to truly move towards, I wrote down what the, the purpose of CAFN is. Let me get my sheet for you, so that makes a little bit more sense for you. So CAFN's, uh, mission is to support, sustain, and improve food economy, um, as well as to support farm advocacy, uh, and to work towards food access and security. There are a couple of other items as well that they work on, but those seem to stand out the most with what, um, we're talking about. And so we have options to look, to collaborate with a group like that, um, to find things that will truly move us towards this original goal, if that's something we want to continue to do. We can also shift...